Next item, please.
Action items, special consideration of an action item? Are there any agenda item? Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will conclude these, we will exclude these from the motion below.
I would like to exclude five and six to be voted on separately because I have questions that may sway my vote one way or another.
So you want them pulled, five and six?
Yes. Yes, please.
Okay. Anyone else? Oh, did we have a support and a?
Ah.
Oh, nope. I don't have my Robert's Rules.
Cheat sheet.
Cheat sheet, so.
Trusty Thor didn't give it to you?
Uh, he didn't bring it and I forgot to bring mine, so thank you for your help there. So what again with those numbers, we want pulled?
Um, six and, uh, five and six.
Five and six.
Yes.
Okay, anyone else? No? Okay, go ahead.
Um, motion, so do we continue to motion to approve action items or?
Or recommended action.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, with the exception of five and six.
Okay, so move that action items number five and six.
No.
I'm sorry.
One through, how many do we have?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, one, two, however, excluding.
Alright. Thank you.
With the exception of five and six.
Apologies, sorry, let's see. No problem.
With the exception.
First day on the job.
Thirteen, okay. So move that action items one to thirteen excluding five or six be approved as recommended in this, I'm sorry, move that action items one through thirteen be approved as recommended in this agenda with the exception of five and six.
That's correct.
So moved. Sorry, support.
I'm sorry. I heard the support from trustee Moser, but I did not hear who did the.
From trustee Barry.
Okay, so moved from trustee Barry, supported from trustee Moser. Um, let's go ahead and we approve the.
Do we?
No, that's, go back to items five and six.
No, we, we. Don't we vote on?
Oh.
We made the motion.
We made the motion? Oh, a roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Thank you, okay. Um, trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambragio. Trustee McD, I'm sorry, President McDonald.
Yes.
Uh, trustee Moser.
Yes.
Trustee Pechtkov.
Yes.
Trustee Thor.
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes.
Okay, now go back to items five and six.
She has to read them all.
Yeah.
Oh.
You know what? Thank you for keeping us together and to the audience, we thank you for your patience. We're all getting our board legs under us with our new positions.
Okay, so then now.
You're gonna read number five.
Okay, thank you.
The recommended action.
Just the recommended action.
Recommended action.
Okay, so, uh, recommend the action for number five. Move that the Board of Education authorized the admin, administration to ratify the contracts with McComb Mechanical, Inc. for the replacement of the air handling unit at Fortson High School in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars with a contingency of fifteen thousand for an amount not to exceed one hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and eleven per board report twenty-one hyphen sixty.
So moved.
Support.
Now, I too had some questions with this one, um, but go ahead, trustee Moser, and stage your questions.
Yeah, I, I just want to know, um, either from Mark or from the administration as far as how this was, uh, I, I understand the first one was an emergency situation. So probably this, um, vendor was just pulled because we, they've done work for us in the past and we asked them to prepare kind of a quote and we went through that way. Is that what we happened, that's why we didn't go through a bid and wait for the whole process?
Correct, we, we, we used, um, uh, the Ammu, uh, OmniTrack, I'm sorry. The Omni Consortium.
The consortium.
Tongue tied, right, a consortium bid for this because of the timeframe and the safety with it. So, um, we found historically that it, this is, this pricing, it, not to forego a formal bid, but historically, we've done pretty, this pricing has, has come in pretty fair when we compare it with our formal bids on similar projects. So that's why we were comfortable to go to Dr. Maleko and ask him for his approval on this emergency purchase due to the safety concerns.
So if we went through the other way of doing a formal bid, you don't think we would get a better price or better competition?
Well, we look, uh, so when we look at historically when we've done, um, pricing like this and through a formal bid, they both have been pretty close. The Omni, it's a pretty good competitive consortium pricing for this.
So when do we make that call?
This one, we only went that way because of the emergencies and with the safety behind it. But, you know, with the projects coming up, we're gonna be doing, we're gonna be bringing a lot of, uh, formal bids coming with all the air handling and, uh, air conditioning that we'll be installing.
Great, okay. We're only voting on five, so I'll hold my questions on six.
Um, I'm going to just say something about five because I too had some questions and I discussed it with, uh, Superintendent Maleko. Um, the fact that it was A-Hall and that this was a failure of the air handling unit. Um, and you had answered my question, so just for the audience, can you give a recap of, of what is being done to make sure that that hallway is safe until the, um, proper unit is, uh, we've received it and it's installed?
Right, so, uh, at Fortson, uh, the buildings broke up in sections. A-Hall has its own air handler, the air handler is what brings in the fresh air to the building. Um, that equipment is original and as a, a lot of you are aware, uh, the Fortson is gonna have its hundred year anniversary coming up here, um, very shortly. So that equipment was pushing a hundred years old. And so, uh, one of the fan blades on there, it started to crack, um, the, the building engineer noticed that. So and Mr., uh, Rob Baronowski, who is here tonight, he was one of our HVAC techs with, um, Mr. Perry, who went over there and they were able to secure that fan blade. But, uh, during COVID, we ran those units at max capacity to try to turn air over as much as possible for, uh, one of our mitigations for COVID. But, um, the Ashray is a one, is they're the organization that sets the air quality standards for, uh, public education schools. So we were able, our HVAC technicians were able to get that fan going at the, at the code standards, um, not ramping up like we're doing at all our building. And other parts of the building too, those air handlers at Fortson are still, um, going at a higher capacity. Uh, but just the A-Hall, we're running at just a, the, the standards that are set by Ashray. And in the meantime, we have those Ford motor box fans that we're encouraging all the staff to u, utilize during the time until we can get this equipment in and it's switched out.
And you think it should be done and installed before May, is that?
You know, I'd, I'd like to sit here and tell you def, definitively, but everything that we're hearing with the lead time, I don't wanna put my name on there and say for sure. But, um.
That's the hope.
We're doing all we can to get it done as soon as possible, I can tell you that.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Thor?
Thanks, President McDonald. Mr. Andrews, uh, two questions then that kind of follow up with what trustee Moser had said. Uh, the first one would, would be that if, if this hadn't been a catastrophic failure, if this had been something that had just been noted, then we would have probably gone through a different process so we were ready when it did die.
Correct.
Because we're running above capacity, whether it's at Fortson or some of our older buildings, have we reviewed then what that's doing to their useful life? Do we need to start getting ahead of it on some of our?
Absolutely, um, just this week, we have our architects that are going through our building. This is part of our, our bigger project of, um, improving all our air quality. And they're actually, our architects are going into building room from room. They've already gone down into our basements and looked at a lot of these air handlers and they're evaluating those. And that's part of the, the broader scope of work that, um, we're gonna be getting here really busy with that. You've, we've talked about in building site committees, you've come out and reported. So you're gonna be hearing a lot more of, of our requests from the operations department for upgrading and purchasing newer handling equipment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna have a roll call vote on number five.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambragio. Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Moser.
Yes.
Trustee Pechtkov.
Yes.
Trustee Thor.
Yes.
And trustee Watts, yes. Uh, action item number six, the recommended action, move that the Board of Education approve a contract award to NGS LLC in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand with a contingency of eight thousand for a total amount of eighty-three thousand to apply glazing to all interior glass at Dearborn High, Edsel Ford, Fortson and Michael Berry Career Center.
So moved.
So we have a so moved.
Who moved?
You both moved there at the same, I didn't say anything.
Yeah, I had heard trustee Pechtkov and trustee Thor support. Yes, or trustee Barry?
It was trustee Barry.
Trustee Barry.
Okay, trustee Barry support. Go ahead, trustee Moser, what is your question?
Yes, uh, it was same along these questions. Seems like this also was kind of a single source kind of award to NGS, was it? Or am I mistaken?
Yeah, no, it, we, we went, uh, NGS goes through a cooperative purchasing program through GSA, which is the General, US General Services Administration. And I tried to summarize, maybe I didn't summarize, um, i, with enough information, but they, uh, take thousands and thousands of companies and basically vet them so to make sure that what they're offering are the best prices out there. That combined with the, um, Oxford incident and wanting to get this in motion as quickly as possible is what, uh, what moved me to, um, make this proposal and, and code this route.
If you could, um, because I'm thinking back to last meeting and one of the moms that had, uh, come for special participation or citizens' participation, had a special needs students and she was very concerned about them not being able to get out of their rooms and basically, I think she called them sitting ducks. So if you could take just a minute, um, to explain what this item is and, uh, what it would be helpful for.
Well, without getting, getting into a tremendous amount of detail, Madam President, by the way, congratulations.
Thank you.
It, it, this is, uh, what is going to decrease the amount of time it would take, uh, would be perpetrated to get into a classroom, okay?
Okay.
And it doesn't keep us from leaving through outside doors, exterior windows. We're not, we're not, we're not, we're, we're not decreasing that ability to, um, to use that, that, um, um, that mode of, of exit if that's what we need to do for evacuation.
But it will basically increase the safety of the rooms inside the building.
Yes, and, and as, as we, and research shows that a lot of the, a lot of the, uh, the, the active shooter attacks that take place inside buildings, or, sorry, that take place on high schools that are building related are inside the building. When they're inside the building, the best way to protect the students and the staff is by protecting, uh, by protecting them from the inside as much as possible. And that's what this will do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President?
Yes, trustee Moser?
So, um, I, I, I'm still not understanding the US General Services Administration. So do you go and just pull, um, a contractor from who, is it a member of theirs?
NGS is a contractor that's a member of this, this cooperative, yes. That's been vetted through this group.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, it's, why wouldn't we win, go for a bid for this?
Cause they've already been vetted for pricing.
Okay.
I mean, we, we can do that if the board chooses to, it'll just take us a lot, a lot more time.
Well, it's not the board decision, I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, I understand, no, I understand.
I'm saying why, I always stress this and this is why I'm raising this question is like, we wanna make sure that we wanna get the best buck.
Absolutely.
The best for our buck, right? So we, we wanna make sure that there is much competition. And I, I understand some certain situations where we say there is a single source, a vendor, or this vendor has done great things for us and they have the best price in the market and it would make total no sense to go and do a whole bid process. But, you know, whenever possible, if we can use the bid process to make sure that we're, you know, increasing competition, that gives us an advantage.
Absolutely, no, and I understand that. And, and, and again, this, this process is one of those that, that guarantees us we've got one of the lowest, if not the lowest, prices that are out there. And I can also assure the board that, um, anything that I'm doing, as Mr. Wall stated earlier, is going through his office and if he thinks there's anything that needs to be put out to bid, he's gonna let me know.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote on number six, please?
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambragio. Uh, President McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Moser.
Yes.
Trustee Pechtkov.
Yes.
Trustee Thor.
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes.
Next item, please.
She's going to read the summary.
Summary of agenda action items?
Yes, please.
Um, number one, approval of warrants. Two to three, approval of change orders. Four, approval of award to Data Image Systems, Inc. Five, approval of award to McComb Mechanical, Inc. Uh, number six was the approval of award to National Glazing Solutions, LLC. Number seven, the approval of award to Train. Eight to eleven, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Number twelve, approval of financial statement. And number thirteen, approval of donations. The discussion items that can be for next month?
Yes.
Okay.
The next item, we will postpone till next month.
Okay. Um, next, the Board of Education, business acknowledgement of correspondence.
Um, trustee Thor, you being, just coming off the presidency, those generally have been going in your direction. Do you have anything to add?
Normal parents and, and community members reaching out. I was following up with everyone through the end of the year and maybe even the first couple of days of January. But, uh, most of them were, there were some, they were just, you never know if everyone's really getting it individually or if they included all of us at, at one time. But I tried to make sure all the responses were going to all of us.
Yeah. So that's what I've seen as well, concerns from parents, which we always take seriously and address. Anyone else? Okay, next item, please.
Board member committee and organization reports.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, assignment of committees?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to take, I wanted to take, uh, just a second to say a couple of things. One with, um, the committees, I've talked to a couple of you, but if you could reach out to me, let me know your preference on committees that you'd like to serve on and if there's some that you absolutely would not like to serve on, I will do my best to accommodate you. Keeping in mind that I am going to try to keep one member currently serving on a committee, on that committee for continuity's sake.
Yes.
So, um, we haven't always been real good at doing that in the past, but I think it's important. So if you could reach out to me, um, I have also planned on calling each of you probably in the next week. So if, um, you don't hear from me in the next few days, um, by the weekend, if you could reach out to me, I would appreciate it. Or send me a text or an email. Um, the other thing I want to do, uh, cause I think this is appropriate time, is just a reminder that next week's college meeting will be held on Tuesday due to the MLK, um, observance, holiday observance. And there is a policy committee meeting scheduled prior to that meeting and that will be of the current members serving on the policy committee. So don't forget you have that meeting next Tuesday for the college.
That's not fair.
Next item, please.
Board member superintendent commentary.
Um, trustee Thor?
Earlier today, we went through recognition in moment of silence and Mr. Mustin sent something out to at least the board, I think went to the whole community about the death of one of our former employees, George Eric. He spent roughly forty years in the district teaching at Bryant Adams, so you can tell he's been around for a long time for Adams, Adams Middle School and Dearborn High. Um, Mr. Eric was a great teacher. I had a chance to, to be in his classroom and, uh, be on the track team with him. He was also a football coach. And, uh, for all those younger teachers, when, when they sit there and think, is it worth it? Do I get any payback on this? Mr. Eric would always tell stories of how he would be walking around in the community and next thing you know, some, some adult would come up quoting Macbeth to him. So he knew what he was teaching in English class, stuck with people for the rest of their lives. So he will be sorely missed in the community.
Thank you for sharing that. Anyone else, trustee Barry?
Dr. Maleko, Crestwood, uh, school board member, does she still work for us? Nadia Barry?
Yes, yes, Nadia Barry.
Yeah, I can.
Yeah, okay, so then here's another one to recognize, thank you for catching that.
Actually, trustee Moser reminded me, I wasn't sure.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And also, Mr. Malik's safe, I, I believe he served on the Melvandale Board of Education for a while, so we thank him also for his service.
Thank you, and the reason I, I received an email from the superintendent which flagged it on my.
Sure, no, sure.
But I appreciate you catching those and, yeah, appreciate, any, and anyone else who may be out there?
You said that, but just.
We never know.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Trustee Moser?
Yes, um, thank you. Uh, one thing that I, I think we missed from last year, I don't know if this was, and trustee Pechtkov can remind me, we did this year when she was president, we did this self, a board self-evaluation.
Yeah, we did.
And, uh, you know, in these times of triumph, I'm wondering if we need to do one, um, as we are folding this year or folding, we already folded twenty-twenty-one and we're saying hello to twenty-twenty-two. But I think it would be nice to continue that tradition. Um, and I hope Dr., um, doctor, hey, Dr. McDonald. President McDonald will, um, obviously this is at your discretion if we would like to do a self. I think that would be great since we have now, uh, new members of the board, trustee Watts and trustee D'Ambragio.
I've always felt them valuable, so.
Yeah, I, I did too. I, I, I did them once, but I think, um, they're very valuable.
Yeah, I think you were brand new on the board when we did it.
Yes, I was, yes. So, um, it would be nice to see how everybody feels that we're doing. I know we, trustee Barry and President Cavalluna has mentioned how others criticize us and I think we, or they praise us, we would like to do the same for ourselves, um, in that realm and within ourselves and to really know our weaknesses, our strengths, and to definitely celebrate our best successes. Um, the other thing that I would like to, um, mention, obviously Martin Luther King Service Day is coming up. I know our students are probably dis, doing something, Dr. Maleko. Um, so that, um, I would like to wish everybody a happy Memorial Day of, um, Martin Luther King Junior, who is an icon of this country, uh, of the civil rights movement and also to all of the icons who led the civil rights movement and to all the leaders of so, social justice movement um, that is still going on until today for equity, um, justice and fairness. Um, the other comment that I'd like to make, um, and this is regarding bidding again, um, I don't know if Mr. Wall's here, but, and I hope that maybe the administration would consider, I know we've seen a lot of marketing about getting local businesses involved in our schools and I would hope that we would have some kind of a webinar, since this is kind of the trend, of saying how to do business with different schools as a local business. How, what would you need, the bonding?
I think I remember seeing something.
We've done them, we have one coming up.
We have do one coming up, here you go.
Yeah, we did one and we had a really good turnout, um, and we're doing another one here in the next week or two.
Uh, that's what I was thinking of, I was just, great, so hopefully we can push that through so businesses are aware of that because I've had some people come up to me and say, hey, how do we do? And I directed them to Mr. Wall and to the, Dr. Maleko. And, um, it seems like to be a recurring theme, so it'd be nice to have something posted and then perhaps posted on the website too as a video for others to watch.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mustin is gonna work with us, uh, if you don't see it soon, you'll be seeing it, some advertising and some local papers and things like that. Um, and this time, we're gonna have our architects and Clark Construction onboard, so we're looking forward to this meeting.
Yeah. The last comment that I would like to make is obviously thanking our teachers and support staff. I know they've been through a lot, especially with the school shootings now, you know, the rise of COVID cases and the, the anxiety levels that we're having and that's why I asked if we can survey and see how they're doing. I know we, our s, s, social work staff have been, uh, probably at the brink. They've been overstretched, they've been overworked and we, and the psychologists too and all of the support staff who work in that arena. Um, and I do realize that because the last two years have been definitely very difficult for everybody. And I advise everybody, if you are, I, I did seek therapy myself sometimes and I, I, in August, I started actually going back to the gym and, and then, you know, obviously with, with making sure that I, I do, uh, take the precautions. Um, but it's, it's changed, it actually changed the whole idea for me. I actually lost twenty pounds, I'm really proud of that, so, um, I don't know if you guys have noticed that, trustee Barry didn't?
I wasn't checking you out.
But, uh, truly, yeah, on a serious note, our teachers are being pushed and, uh, we're seeing that and we do appreciate them. Um, we, I appreciate the administration in making some, uh, advances and making the teachers and support staff feel appreciated and to stay in our district, but keep those, uh, things coming, the appreciations that we're doing, but also looking at the, how do we lessen the pressure on them as well? And, and even pay attention to their mental health as we're paying attention to the mental health of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Watts?
Um, just to follow up, um, yesterday was, I believe, police enforcement, national, national police enforcement day. Um, so I wanted to say thank you to all of our SRO officers and to Mr. Leacher. Um, and I had spoken to one of our officers, I believe, Chad Honey, not the Michigan football player, unless he is, let me know, um, on the phone. But he was just sharing with me the last couple of weeks of the school year, um, last year after Oxford. And I think, um, just a thank you to all of those S R, our officers out there because I think they had a tremendous weight on their shoulders and still continue going forward. Um, and I think it's poignant to remember all of those that keep our, our children safe, especially, um, knowing that, you know, they have a job like teachers, that there are only a few that have the heart of gold to wanna continue pursuing, police officers, especially, I think in the wake of January sixth and seeing what happened on the Capitol and seeing the hundred and fifty-eight, I believe, officers that are still traumatized by that. Um, and so I know that they take that home and I think our officers as well take that home when they see our children. So I just wanted to say thank you, um, to all of those out there that keep our children safe, so.
Thank you for that too. And I will also commend our, um, SRO officers. They do an extraordinary job and they're not only, um, beneficial to our students, our schools, but our community in general. Um, the work that they do helps our students engage with the community and it helps give them a positive direction in life and it also helps them realize that, um, you work with the police and that they can help you and that they can, uh, be a positive force in your life. So again, thank you. Anyone else had commentary?
I, I have more commentary that I just remembered on that conversation, trustee Watts, so thank you. Um, obviously, our police station and our district was really, um, what's the word that I'm looking for? Um, extended with all of the resources when we had these, after the in, unfortunate incident at Oxford, we had so many pranks happening at our schools and so many empty threats. And Dr. Maleko will take, tell you that he takes every threat seriously. We don't know which one is a prank and which one is not. So for students, I, and parents alike, I hope that you would have this conversation about the importance, I've had that with my kids, about the importance of not making any, coming near these empty threats. To make a threat of terrorism in the state of Michigan, it is a felony of twenty years in prison. Um, so it, it is very, very, very hard and i, it's not a joke to make those empty threats. You're putting a lot of people, especially that we, after this incident, everybody is scared. So to, to, to think this is funny or to think this is, and I know we have that in, in multiple schools, it's not. Uh, you're definitely making a huge deal and it could definitely impact your life forever. So I hope that, uh, the youth, I know they, they take these seriously and I appreciate those student leaders who have advised others of not making those empty threats or pranks, I guess, they're not making them as threats. But I, I hope that those, definitely this was a trend and it would stop forever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Just to expand a little bit on what trustee Moser just said. Students, if you see or receive a threat, send it to the police, send it to an administrator, talk to your parents about it if it's outside of school hours. Do not share it with your friends because that's how this spreads too quickly.
Good point.
And takes too long to unravel.
Absolutely. Trustee Barry, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, just so we've invited Mr. Cavalluna.
Oh. Um, I have one piece of commentary that I'd like to share. And that is, as we continue to navigate all of the forces affecting our daily lives, I'd like to just share a few of my thoughts. Um, when we talk about diversity and inclusion, we must also understand that that also has to mean ideas and opinions. Better decisions are reached when we consider a multitude of possibilities coming from a variety of life experiences. But while sharing our ideas and opinions, we must listen and practice civility and mutual respect, especially when we disagree. Remember, we teach our children through words and deeds and they are watching and they are learning. So needless to say, the past two years have been extremely difficult for everyone. We've all gone through a lot of personal loss and turmoil that has disrupted all of our lives. recognizing that we do not know the hardships that others are currently facing. And together, we can expand the universe of possibilities for all of our children. Thank you. Next item, please.
Feature meeting dates? Tuesday? Oh, request for information, sorry. Request for information and/or feature agenda items.
Trustee Barry?
Dr. Maleko, I meant to ask it earlier, but this is a good time to ask. The bond committee meeting on Thursday, is that a public meeting, open meeting?
No, it's not a, it's not an open meeting.
People were asking, so just.
No, it's just a committee.
It's a committee, calls committee.
Yeah.
Okay, just let them know. Thank you, sir.
And plus, we're also taking precaution. I believe we moved it to the stout team room to try to spread out more, given the COVID.
It's a good idea. Thank you, sir.
I have a question, and I think I have probably asked it before. And the data that I received might not have been the data that I was looking for. And on a high level, I would like to see comparison of academics, excellence or academic grades as far as have they, especially at the high school level? Have they increased with, now we're coming back and looking at back at the weird year that we had in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one? I would like to go back to twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, prior to the pandemic and this semester as it unfolds. So this data might not be needed immediately. We will wait, we want to wait until the semester finishes and see how our students are doing. Are they doing better? Are they doing worse? Are they doing about the same as far as getting ease in their classes? Or failing classes and needing to remediate and do like credit recovery classes? Is that clear, Dr. Maleko?
So Ms. Farage and Dr. Patterson have presented on the past, so we just have to add the upcoming years to those type of form.
I just wanted, like, this past semester for high school and compare that with twenty eighteen or twenty, the year where we didn't have, obviously, yeah, we could use twenty nineteen's.
And you're saying the current semester that finishes up next, at the end of next week?
Yeah, just for high school. Semester fall.
And hopefully, this is not a lot of data crunching.
Versus, you said twenty nineteen, fall semester?
Yes. And if it's a lot, it could be just like a random high school could be selected.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. So just the high school, though?
Yes.
Anyone else? Trustee Watts?
Yes, to get information regarding students who, and I think this may parallel with, I believe, a report that we're waiting for in terms of discipline. But if we find a student who may be struggling, may be acting out, but may have some need for mental health services, what does that procedure look like? In terms of, does it go to the teacher and then from the teacher recommends on? Just to see a visual as to how that student and what timeframe that student receives those services? If they receive them at all.
The discipline referral process with potential.
Well, I know that there was, we're waiting on a report for the discipline policy to be looked at. So maybe it's not necessarily a discipline issue, but maybe there's the.
We are going to do, and this is going to take time, the Student Code of Conduct is going to go over a review, but that will take months. That's not going to be something.
No, I think this would be more specific if there is a student that clearly is struggling and there's some mental health issues. Then what is the?
That might not have previously been identified, okay?
Right, and maybe there is zero discipline issues there, but maybe it's just more of a mental health. What does that process look like?
How are they identified and how are they put into some kind of system of support?
Yes, thank you.
Trustee Petchikoff?
Yeah. I've had a number of people during this last election cycle when new administration and a new police chief was going to potentially be selected. There's a lot of conversation revolving around traffic issues and driving. I was on the board in two thousand and eight when we were in dire financial straits. And that was one of the first things we cut as an outer circle program that we could no longer afford to support. And I recognize that we're not ready. There's been a lot of conversation in the community, though, that the schools should take up driver's ed again, only because a lot of people feel the paid-for, for-profit driving schools are not doing the job that they would like to see done the way the public school system used to address it. I'm not suggesting at this point in time because it would be a pretty costly adventure for us to reconfigure a full driver's ed program, especially since we took out the whole courses over at Etzel Ford and everything. We don't have vehicles. But could we potentially look at developing maybe a supplement program for young drivers where we incorporate at least the written program? Where we can help, we might not be instructing them in the actual vehicle, but we could help support what may be lacking in these public institutions and from parents who are not helping the students understand all the rules of the roads appropriately and emphasizing all of that so that we might be able to have a support course that students, and we can even maybe partner with the police department or somehow even go to the Secretary of State's office and see if we can be a pilot program. I'm just suggesting, you know, this is something we could start kind of brainstorming about in order to help course correct a lot of the poor driving we see occurring that I believe is beginning with the new drivers. It's certainly not ending there. We have a lot of adult drivers, too, that don't seem to be respectful of the roads these days. So that was one of my things I thought that we could start to reconsider again. And the other question I have, and I can't remember whether it's at the college level or at the P-12 level, were we not piloting a program about financial literacy?
At the college level.
At the college, okay, then I'll have that question because, but it was a partnership, yeah. I wanted to see how that was working and were we going to be able to expand that at some point as well?
I believe this is the first semester.
Yeah.
They're just wrapping up the first semester.
We have several going into enrollment. I can get you the numbers from Mr. Filippo.
Okay.
Russ, President Cavalluna and I talked just before the break about this. And we have, you know, some of them can be taught by our instructors and some of them are taught by college instructors. So we have that moving and that was, if you remember, under the Deputy Governor
Right.
promoted that while over a year. It's a good program. But yeah, we're definitely expanding that already, so.
Okay. I'd like to see how that, how successful that is.
Kind of have an update on that.
Yeah, just an update, yeah.
Trustee Thorp?
Quick question. I know that we're getting ready to run, I think it's some of the high schools sessions again about vaping. And I was just curious, I know we have to teach health curriculum. Is substance abuse and vaping, are those types of fields in the curriculum? How are we teaching the students, preferably before they even try this, what their repercussions are? So just get back to me on that one when you have a chance. Thanks.
Not a request for information, but just a comment on the driver ed. I remember taking driver ed at Etzel Ford and had one of the best instructors there.
My daughter took it, too.
No, but seriously, that was, that was a program that unfortunately, I don't know, it's obviously.
It was financial.
Yeah. But it was, it was, this is why we're seeing this many. Because unfortunately, I say this with total honesty, and I'm sorry, this is obviously a request for information, but just to tell you that how many people get their license without the proper education? It's totally sad and it's totally dangerous. And we're responsible of these companies that are for profit. Some are doing really amazing and they actually take their, you know, due diligence and they fail students when they do the driving test and be like, you have to do it again. But some have, I've heard from students themselves, be like, I got a driver's license and I ran four stop signs. I failed my first one because I failed, I did a run-on stop sign. He told me, you have to do it again. This is what we need, a lesson to be learned that you have to really stop at the stop sign. They have to be very, you know, careful when you're driving. You have to practice, I still remember his words, the instructor. I forgot his name, but I remember his words. You have to be a defense driver. Like, you got to play defense. And it seems like in Dearborn, you always have to play.
Trustee Barry?
But thank you.
You know, on that subject, I like where Trustee Petchikoff is going with this. I don't know where we do it, but part of the curriculum, part of the special class. But what I'm hearing Trustee Petchikoff say is educate young people on the consequences of reckless driving. And me, I'm sure.
And what a turn signal is really for and how to, you know.
Well, yeah, I mean, just showing.
Yeah.
Showing these young people, you know, facts locally, you know, how many, how many young people died because of speedy and stuff like that.
We have a rollover accident on a regular basis.
But, Trustee Barry, if I may, I think parents need to be educated, too. I mean, to give your seventeen-year-old a brand-new charger that is, that can go to sixty miles per hour in three seconds.
It's more machine than they can handle.
Yes. No matter how you think your children are angels and responsible, but we all had it as teenagers. We want to have that thrill. I had a Neon ninety-five that wouldn't go over fifty. Anyway, I'll end on that for tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else for future items?
No, just to piggyback, there is a foundation down the street, I believe in Plymouth, the Keifer Foundation, K-E-I-F-E-R. Their son, Mitchell, had passed away and they are proponents of passing legislation, but he, about stopping distracted driving. So I think there might be some collaboration, perhaps their.
Assemblies kind of thing?
Perhaps, yes, yes. Something to look into, yes.
Assemblies again?
Yes.
Even virtual assemblies.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, they're very active in the communities, metro-Detroit area, so.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Future meeting dates? Tuesday, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, HFC Board Trustees Meeting, seven PM at the Administration Administrative Services and Conference Center, Henry Ford College and the Rosenell Boardroom. Monday, February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, seven PM at the Administration Service Center in the Frank Franci Boardroom. Monday, February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, the HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, seven PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center, Henry Ford College and the Rosenell Boardroom.
And without an extension, we are adjourned.